Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the New Bern Board of Aldermen meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask my classmate Reverend Hazel Royal if you'd come up and give the opening prayer for us.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come tonight to give thanks unto you. We thank you for yet another day. We thank you for this beautiful city of New Bern, and we thank you for the plans that are before us on the table tonight. It is our prayer that whatever the discussion may be, that we will be led by you, that we will walk in unity and understanding, and at the end of the day, when we depart from this place, your will will be done. We thank you for our city leaders. We speak blessings upon them. May they, Father God, look to you for wisdom and knowledge and understanding, that this city may move forward and be the greatest city in our nation. This is our prayer, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Clerk, would you go ahead and roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, here. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. At this time, we have a very important group here tonight. We have Boy Scout Troop Number 132. And would you guys like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what church you're affiliated Speak real, speak up into the mic so we can hear you good.
My name is Avery Goodman. I am a first-class scout, and we are out of Garber and Methodist Church in Trent Woods.
My name's Andrew Jojo. I'm a first-class scout, and I'm with Troop 132.
I'm Angelo Bennett. I'm from Troop 132, and I'm a first-class scout.
My name is Aiden Hacker. I'm first-class and from 132.
Well, thanks for being with us tonight. Future leaders of New Bern right there. We have some requests and petitions of citizens tonight, and we're going to start with Ms. Cheryl Reed. If you'd like to come up, give your name and address for the, for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cheryl Reed, and I'm from the Trent Court Resident Council and Lift Complex. We'd just like to give her speak, us to speak on the importance of knowing how the residents of Trent Court feel in regards to two issues. Mainly, the issue of hearing that the decision to, a second decision since one is in the air, is that residents would be moved across Broad Street and towards Dufferfield. So, this is the next step of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Greater Five Points Transformation Plan, a cooperative effort between the city and the housing authority. The plan recognized that Trent Court was old, obsolete, and prone to flooding. We pray that we don't have a big hurricane this year. No one is more aware of this than us, the people that live in Trent Court. We've participated throughout the CNI process. We listened, we spoke, we were heard, and we compromised, as did others. We came up with a plan calling for the Trent Court residents to be relocated to new homes and new apartment complexes, which would not look like where we are now, because the government is not making it where public housing looks like, the public housing that we have, that was 70 to 80 years old. We had an opportunity to go to other cities because of the nine cities, the other nine, other eight cities that were chosen for the transformation plan. And we got to see, in Wilmington, in Atlanta, two resident councils did, we went with a group of citizens from New Bern to Wilmington, we went to Jacksonville to see their new low-income housing, which was their public housing. So, in the course of all the times that we spent with the task groups, and we did many of the task groups, but our most important one was in regards to housing. We hope, and we had, have great hope, and we're anticipating to have decent housing that no longer looks like public housing. The site that the house, by the, the site desired by the Housing Authority is 703 Carolina Avenue. We are familiar with it, and we find it desirable as well. I do know that they have an extensive search for, have had an extensive search for sites, and they feel that this one satisfies all the conditions. We also are aware, right now especially, that it's not feasible for some to have us in that area. And for their reasonings, I understand, but as a substitute to that, we're not, as again, I'll say, we're not looking to be placed across Broad Street or anywhere in that particular area. So, we've heard openly the desires of some relocated residents to the north of Broad Street, like I said. We are intensely opposed to that. We have looked into a representative to assist us should we want to have our petition sent to those that they need to send it to, just for that fact, not for any other grievances do we have right now except that. We've worked very hard during all our task groups. We made connections with many partners in this city that some of us thought we wouldn't probably get an interest in, but those were the people that we had coming to all our meetings during the transformation plan. We did a number of wonderful things with the Y, with Carolina East Hospital, with Craven County Schools. We got over 1,000 books donated for our children at a time through Pi and Dolly and Graham. We have Smart Start, something going on now with the Dolly Parton, Reach Out and Read, not just because I'm a board member, but we have over 107, 37 children, from birth to five, who will receive books in their names until they go to kindergarten. We had health fairs, food banks, we had Mercy Clinic, RCS, Promise Place, and many other people come and be a part of our health fairs and events. I say this just to say because these things that we had going on for us and our residents, it's inspired other residents to have a different mindset and to understand how important it is to value where you live and how you live. So, from that, we're very pleased and very happy with how things turned out with the transformation plan. We are saddened and disappointed that our friends in Pembroke resist us.
Ms. Reed, you're, you're four minutes.
My four minutes is up.
Yes.
But we'd like to connect and talk with you guys as citizens together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up. Our next petition is from Evelyn Sparrow.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Evelyn Sparrow. I stay at C-24 Trent Court, and I thank you for letting us come here to have a chance to speak. I just wanted to say that I have been in Trent Court for three years, and things are much better there. And when it comes to this redevelopment plan on Carolina, Carolina Avenue, it, I'm just hoping that everything will work out well with that plan, because the shopping centers, everything is close to the shopping centers and, you know, the grocery stores, rather than the other choice of one in Dufferfield. So, I just want to say that I just hope everything work out well, and we are great people. It's, it will be, the plan is going to be a mixed-income development. It will not be like Trent Court is now, and we are great, we are great people, great citizens of New Bern, and we are just looking forward to moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming up. Our next speaker is Hazel Royall, Reverend Hazel Royall.
Good evening, Mayor Outlaw and Board of Aldermen. My name is Hazel Royall, and I reside at 1601 New Bern Avenue in the great community of Pembroke. I'm before you this evening because it's my understanding that on July 24th, you will entertain a proposal from the New Bern Housing Authority regarding the sale or the transfer of city-owned property, which is located in the Pembroke community. It is also my understanding that this proposed transaction is for the relocation of the Trent Court community to the Pembroke community. Well, I'm here to state, as a resident of Pembroke, that I firmly oppose this action. And as you can see by those that are present this evening, it is the consensus of the Pembroke community that they stand firm in opposition also. On that note, Pembroke, would you please stand? Thank you so very much. And for those who could not attend, we have, they have voiced their opinion and their decision in a petition that you have before you tonight also. And so, it's very obvious that the action would greatly negatively impact our community. And by negatively impacting it, it would increase population density, it would increase street, as well as foot traffic, as well as empower, compound any pre-existing social problems that we already have. And we respect the, the decision and the desire of the residents from Trent Court. We admire their desire to move forward. But again, looking at our community and what we already are being challenged with, it would only exacerbate what we already are challenged with. I urge each one of you tonight to consider the well-being of our community, and I ask that you would respect our position by rejecting any proposal for the sale or transfer of city property in Pembroke solely for that purpose. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Moore. I'm a resident of the Pembroke community as well, and I also did a consensus through the Harvard Review, which I do some writing from time to time. And I did a, an impact of affordable housing and communities and what it would entail in terms of the impact of higher costs in insurance, because, you know, as anyone knows that when you're getting insurance for a home, when you're a homeowner, your insurance is actually determined by the area that you reside in. And whatever the area is, if it's a low-crime-rate area, then you have lower rates on your insurance. That's going to be an increase on our insurance in the area, because there's going to be a higher crime rate, or potential for a higher crime rate, I'll put it that way. Also, a potential for, and let me just, I only have four, what, four minutes?
Well, actually, you didn't even sign up for the request petition, so I'm kind of figuring that you're on tandem with Hazel that you're even up there.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Well, I do have these little pamphlets that I can leave with you.
Yes, ma'am, but you did, you did not register, you did not sign a request.
Okay, okay. Well, I do stand firm.
So, I'm kind of, I'm kind of breaking the rules a little bit, that you're in tandem, that you were up there with Ms. Reed.
I certainly appreciate it.
That you're even there, so thank you. But you're doing a good job. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, and what I, all I want to, to say, I've got a list of studies through the Harvard Review of what happens when communities are, are compound together with 50 or more public housing, how it impacts, has a negative impact on the community at large. So, I do have the census on that, and I would, if it's okay with you, leave one of these with you, that you can read at a later time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I won't take up any more of your time, but I just do want to.
Yes, ma'am. For the record, would you, the city clerk would like your, your name and, and address?
Well, I will, it's on Pembroke. I don't want to give out my address.
Oh.
Okay, but I am a member of the Pembroke community, as you're not giving out your address.
Oh, my address is 4921 Morton Avenue.
Oh, well, that's entirely up to you, but, you know, it is.
Yes, ma'am, but that's just the public record that we normally do that when we're doing petitions.
Sure. That's fine.
Okay, this time, the last person that signed up to petition the City of New Bern for requests and petition of citizens, sign-up sheet, is Ricky Durham. So, if you'd like to come forward, Mr. Durham, and speak to the board and state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Durham. I stay at 1922 Davis Street. And first of all, I'd like to say this is nothing against any residents in Trent Court or anywhere else, because everybody deserves a decent place to live, and I have no problem with that, no harm with that. I, too, oppose the relocation to Pembroke, and I oppose it because I lived there, and I've been a part of Pembroke since the days when Pembroke only had one paved road, which was Chestnut. I remember a time when you could sleep in your house with your doors open, screen door locked, and it was safe. Nothing against Trent Court or anywhere else, but times have changed. A lot of things have changed in Pembroke, a lot of things have been done in Pembroke, many things we had no say-so in. I went to a meeting last night, and it actually disturbed me to hear some of the things that I heard, with this, the best, the best location, the best for this, the best for that. Best for who? What's best for Pembroke? Who better knows than Pembroke? It really bothered me to hear that our alderman came to a meeting to voice our feelings and let you know that we were in opposition against this, and then still to hear that possibly on the 24th, you may still go forward. Now, this, you might say, well, everybody deserves to be heard, and that's a good thing, but I think there's been too, too much emphasis on hearing and not enough on listening, because hearing is an involuntary reaction, unless you are hard of hearing or hearing impaired. If sound is made audible sound in your distance of hearing, you will hear it whether you want to or not. But listening is intentional. To listen, you have to pay attention, it's done with intent, to hear, not just hear, but to understand. And they asked, what do we need most in Pembroke? I feel what we need most in Pembroke is not to be heard, but to have a voice where we're listened to, where our decisions are respected. There was someone, I don't know who it was, because I wasn't at the last meeting, part of the city, and he asked, they were asked, well, would you like for this to happen in your community, to come to your community? That person said no.
That was the Housing Authority?
Housing Authority. Whoever that person was, they said no. So, he would say no, but it's okay that if I say no, that you say, well, we're going to do it anyway. Now, presumption of innocence is a beautiful thing, but it's only as beautiful to the degree that is properly and rightfully executed. Now, to say, well, these people have a right to be heard, so we need to hear them, but to just hear me, to hear me, and then go ahead and do what you want anyway, that's like having presumption of innocence and say, okay, we need to let them have a trial, but we know what our decision is. And so, that's how I may feel. So, there's the lack of trust between the Pembroke community and the City of New Bern when your voices are being heard but not listened to. So, if I don't trust you, and you don't know why I don't trust you, then we can't fix the issue. And the issue with the trust is, we feel like we're being heard but not listened to. And there's nothing against anybody in Trent Court, but it's hard for me to believe that this is the only place in New Bern that can be made available to where they can live in a decent place and at peace and be happy, and the city be satisfied as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Oh, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Mr. Stevens, the first item is item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, this item is a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse for the 2018-19 capital equipment purchases. It's something that we bring to you quite frequently for any kind of capital purchases that we plan to take financing out on. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse for the FY 2018-19 capital equipment purchases.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris. Is there a discussion? See, now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman here, Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 10, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order for the 2018 street resurfacing contract. As you recall, back in April, at one of our board meetings, the board authorized me to execute a contract with Morton Trucking for this resurfacing project. What we would like to do is execute a change order that will be for $675,000 to resurface three additional streets. This proposed change order will also extend the length of the contract by 60 days to allow this work to be, to be done. There's a memo in your packet from Mr. Montane. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
May I make a comment? I see this is Oaks Road and National Avenue, and I can continue, as I know you do, Alderman Best, because they kind of coincide with our bicycle travelers and people going up and down that road or discussing potholes and, you know, bad things in the middle of the road. Will this paving fix this?
All right. I'll ask Matt come up, and he can detail those.
To answer the question, as far as the potholes and the resurfacing, this will address those needs. As you remember, during the, during the budget work session, there were two options or last budget work session, there were a couple different options. It was an $800,000 option to resurface Oaks Road, and then there was an additional $500,000 option for sidewalks. At that time, the $800,000 was approved for the resurfacing. So, last budget year, we went down Oaks Road, and we actually widened it by two feet on each side, and this year, we'll go back and resurface it from North Glen Burnie Road all the way to Broad Street.
All the way to Broad, so it'll clean off.
That's correct.
And that'll fix the problems that are there. And just for the public's knowledge, again, what is the anticipated timeframe that this is going to happen?
Currently, the contract now that we have is substantial completion date is September 24th. We would extend that by 60 days.
Okay.
So, this calendar year, yes. That's correct. November, December 24th, somewhere near there.
Thank you.
I think pretty much we're all concerned, you know, getting complaints about some potholes. Are you going to mill particularly?
We will. What we'll do is, the first thing we'll do is, we'll go through there and do some full-depth patching. Anywhere we have potholes or cracking or that type of stuff, we'll go in there, go in and do some full-depth patching, then we'll mill the edge of the road along the curb and gutter, and then we'll do a complete resurface after that.
Okay, on the best.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like for, to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order for the 2018 street resurfacing contract.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Best, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there a discussion? See, now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 11, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, next two items, we have our leases, typically come around this time of year. The first one is resolution approving a lease agreement with Craven County for a portion of a parcel ID 8-006-384 for use by the George Street Senior Center. This request was made by Camp Flowers of Department of Social Services for this to be renewed. If you look at the piece of property, this is the gazebo area to the left. It's a piece of property that we own that's not part of the facility itself. The term of the proposed lease will be for 24 months, beginning July 1, 2018, until June 30 of 2020 at a rate of $1 per year. And then, it also has some renewals, assuming that no one else of the contract. Those would be for three successive one-year terms, so a total of five years. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the lease agreement with Craven County for a portion of the parcel, parcel ID 8-006-384 for use by the George Street Senior Center.
Second.
We have motion and second. Is there a discussion? See, now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another lease agreement that we have for the Area Day Reporting Center. This property is located at 500 Fort Totten Drive. Many of you are familiar with it as the old fire station that we had at Fort Totten Park. The proposed lease for this one is for one year, beginning July 1, 2018, and extending to the 30th of June 2019 at a rate of $1 per year. I'm not sure how many years they've been there, but it's been quite a few, but I'm happy to answer any kind of questions you have.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Center for Youth Property located at 500 Fort Totten Drive.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? See, now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, members of the board. This item is amendment to our Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Fire Prevention and Protection. This is related to some changes that are needed so that we can install the above-ground fuel storage tanks associated with our facilities at the water and sewer and city and garage facilities that were currently either under construction or beginning to construct. So, we want to make sure that our fire code meets that need. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, I just want to know, the current location where the fuel, refueling tanks and the storage tanks, which contain combustible and flammable liquids, at the News Boulevard site now, are they currently above ground?
Currently, at News Boulevard, I'm not aware that we have any combustible tanks. They will be above ground once we do the reconstruction of that site, so that we can move the city garage there. I think we've shown the board a plan. I don't have it necessarily in front of me tonight, but they will be located towards the back of the property with a driveway entrance coming in off of Glen Burnie Road, so, and they will be secure via fence and so forth and so on, so. But currently, right now, I'm not aware of, Mr. Hughes, are you aware of any kind of?
No.
So, the storage containers will be over on the Glen Burnie Road location for the, for the flammable material?
It's really, it'll be on our property. It's kind of going to be set back towards the back of what is currently the water plant, back behind the large water tanks that we have, further back than that, off of News Boulevard, and kind of as far back as we can get off Glen Burnie as well.
Okay. So, the tanks that you're going to, that will be installed on the Highway 55 area, those are the tanks that's going to be above ground, and those are going to only be for refueling tanks?
Those are only for refueling. Those are not for public consumption. Those will be only for our, our vehicles, and actually will be secured via fence, so mainly for our water sewer trucks and facilities needed, any fuel, our fire trucks, police cars that may be out patrolling in that area, they can stop and get fuel if they need to.
So, no flammable material tanks will be stored in the, on the Highway 55 property?
Um.
Out in the Pleasant Hill area? There will be no tanks above ground?
There will be an above-ground tank, but it'll be on the city's property. It won't be close to 55 as well, I basically would say.
Well, I know it'll be on the city's property, but I'm saying, will there be any tanks at that location out in 55?
Yes.
That, and they're above-ground tanks?
Yes.
With flammable materials?
Yes.
Okay. So, what is the potential? I'm just. I'm just asking because that's within my area, and I want to know with those tanks being there, what potential hazards and risks are involved with those tanks being above ground? Do you currently have it, none?
I mean, no more than any other facility of cars driving and hitting the gas tank and fuel spewing out of them at that point. I mean, you know, accidents occur, but I would think that, that that risk is very limited with regards to our tank. We've had one over at our electric department at Cal Road for some time, and it's in perfect working order. They have gas and sensors installations.
Stevens, I think the, the tanks that we're using now are above ground for some portability
That is correct.
opportunities, and then a typical gas station, they're underground.
Correct. That's correct. And, and quite honestly, while you may have some, some related issues with some spills, but environmentally, there are much greater risks that you have environmentally with underground storage tanks than you do above ground, because you're going to be aware of those leaks and what's going on.
Let's get Fire Marshal Danny Hill up here to answer these questions.
And while he's coming up, is there going to be any sort of secondary containment around the?
They actually have a, they're double walled, and they, they actually have their own containment that's part of the unit itself.
Thank you.
It's part of us that we're trying to remediate a lot of underground tanks, and, well, go ahead, you're the expert.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board, the tanks that are being proposed, that put at both sites, are listed tanks. They are made to control any kind of spill from impact. There's also, will be, if we see, once they're installed, additional impact requirements, we can also look at that as we see the site developed out. For spill control itself, the tanks are very safe. They're used quite a bit. The, the site at Cal Road, as far as I know, there's been no issues with that whatsoever, and it is in a traffic area where very large equipment travels through there. And this is really a, a very safe-type site that is typical for this type of use.
One of the things, too, as far as security, to try to keep from accidents occurring, is are they, are they 12-inch or, or 8-inch cylinders filled with concrete for protecting around that unit?
Mr. Stevens, the containment site at the new facility at Highway 55 has 6-inch steel bollards. They're 10-foot tall, 5-foot of its buried, 5-foot of exposed, filled with concrete and rebar, spaced every four foot to protect the tank. The tank itself is double-walled, essentially a tank inside of a tank to prevent any type of exposure if it was damaged or ruptured. With the combination of the way the tank's built and the way we've secured the site around the tank, there's really no possibility for anything to, to hit the tank, impact the tank. It would, it would take almost something, an airplane falling out of the sky to damage the tank at this point, the way we have it built and constructed.
Thank you. I appreciate you, both of you explaining that to me. Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the board consider adopting ordinance to amend Chapter 30, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Best, seconded by Alderman Harris. Is there further discussion? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's start with Alderman Bingle on appointments.
Yes, I'd like to, I have an appointment to the Police Civil Service Board, and I'd like to appoint Ronnie Lovick to that position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Alderman Harris?
No appointments.
Alderman?
No.
Astor? Alderman Kinsey?
I didn't hear a sound, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, this time, let's go to the attorney's report.
Mayor, members of the board, I have one item for you tonight. You have before you a draft resolution that would authorize the mayor to sign a deed from Habitat for Humanity to its newest homeowners. We received a request late last week that Habitat has a closing scheduled for tomorrow, and rather than make those homeowners wait two more weeks, I didn't think that you would mind taking this up tonight. It's rather administrative. If you recall from prior meetings, from time to time, the city will give Habitat vacant lots. It does that through what's called a transfer and reversion agreement, where the city puts conditions on the property, meaning that it must go to low-to-moderate income families within a three-year period. By signing off on the deed, the city is simply acknowledging that that condition has been satisfied, and the homeowner will take the property free and clear. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, and do you need that in form of a motion?
Yes, the motion would be to approve the resolution before you tonight.
So move.
Just a comment, you know, I want to thank, as you might care, all the work that Habitat is doing in our community. It's just pretty incredible, the speed at which they're putting these houses up and really transforming our neighborhoods, and I look forward to, I think we did five this year, and want to do maybe seven. Seven, okay, we want to do seven more next year, so great work by Habitat, and great shout-out to them, and all of their volunteers, because without the volunteers, this wouldn't happen. So thank you very much.
Okay, so you've heard the, the resolution, is it a resolution?
Yes, it's before each of you's time.
And?
I think we have a motion right in a second.
Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman. Beckford?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, do you have anything else, Mr. Davis?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
I have one thing with multiple parts, just real quick, I wanted to give the board an update. There's been various requests regarding some things that were related to DOT. First, let me start with the Old Airport Road. Old Airport Road was officially banned by NC DOT at their July board meeting under item P of their agenda, and the plan is to have this on the agenda for the 24th of July's meeting for formal acceptance by the city. So we had, DOT had to abandon that before we formally accepted into our system. The bridge schedule, item that we had on the last agenda, Preston Hunter, our division engineer locally here, has received the resolution from the city. DOT is supportive of the requests that we've made, and we'll begin the process for questioning this through the Coast Guard. Not real sure on the timing, but normally Coast Guard things can, can linger on a little bit, but hopefully they'll push this through relatively quickly. Exit numbers along Highway 70, they have reviewed that, and it is my understanding that they will be putting up some new signs at those locations to give the exit numbers. The Highway 55 speed limit, we still need to come to some resolution as to how we want to move forward with that. The recommendation was that they do a step-down speed limit, but they're basically awaiting our decision on how we want to move forward with that, if it's acceptable as presented, or if we want to do something different. The flashing lights for 55 and News Boulevard, as you approach the lot at 43, I think Matt has spoken with Scott about this resolution from the board. To NC DOT, he's basically suggested that we talk with NC, NC DOT first, kind of get their thoughts on it. We've talked with Preston about it. He indicated that it may be a good idea, and they would look at it initially and come back to us with some kind of recommendation, and it may require some cost share by the city, and we'd have to evaluate it at that point. The request on sidewalks in New and Country Club, Country Club Road near Bosch, a gentleman came in and spoke about that. Mr. Ruggieri is planning to add those locations to our spot scoring process, potentially future funding through NC DOT's funding mechanism that we have, because those are NC DOT roads. Unless we decide to pay for it all on our own, with our own local money, we can put it in our spot plan and hopefully potentially have that, a portion of that funded through NC DOT's funds. And finally, some money remaining for a portion of Trent Road resurfacing. You know, as they resurfaced Trent Road, there was a section of that that was left open, because they were awaiting the, the reconstruction of the pipes that were right there at Red Robin Lane. That work was completed. They did some resurfacing that was associated with that work, but there was still a section that was left undone. DOT basically has approved that at their last board meeting in July for that work. Actually, I'm sorry, they, we had requested they give us a, cut us a check, because we now own the road, so they're actually going to cut us a check for the estimated amount of the resurfacing, so we should be receiving that relatively soon. Not sure when, but they said they would be sending it. So that's kind of an update on a lot of the NC DOT stuff that we had, and that's all I have.
Okay, let's go to new business.
Let me ask you a question first. What do we need to do to resolve the issue about the speed limit, 155? You said it was kind of up in the air.
Well, DOT had requests, well, the board had requested that we look at the, the speed limits in that area. Steve Hamilton did his review. He's with DOT and made a recommendation that we do a, an extension of the speed limit to a certain area, and then step that up to 45 miles per hour, and then I think that took us to West Pleasant Hill Road, and then from West Pleasant Hill Road to the, the school's maintenance facility, I think it is, that would be 45 miles per hour to there, and then 45 would step up to 55 once you got past that maintenance facility. That's their recommendation, and if the board is amenable to that, then we will put together some information. Matt, you want to add to that? I'm real close, sorry. I was trying to recall that off the top of my head.
Yeah, the current, the current speed limit, I believe, is 55 all the way to 43. Steve's recommendation was to change it to 45 from 43 to West Pleasant Hill, and then step to 50 from West Pleasant Hill to the Craven County Maintenance Facility, and then back to 55 at that point. The board's recommendation was to take it all the way down to 35. The response we got from that was 35 would not be an option. Alderman Best had requested that we take it from 45 all the way to the Craven County facility site and do away with the 50 mile an hour zone. So we actually took that back to Steve and actually went up to Preston, and they both feel strongly that the step-down approach is the proper way to go. They said what they would recommend is that we do the step-down approach, and then we continue to monitor that for some period of time, and it seems to be a continuing effort or continued problem. We can readjust it at that time. That's their recommendation at this point.
So you're saying that they're recommended to take it to, from 55 down to 50?
55 down to 50 from the Craven County Facility to West Pleasant Hill?
Yeah.
And then 45 from West Pleasant Hill to Highway 43.
I, I, I have a problem with that, because why don't, I thought you were going to get back with them and get back with me on that, because I, I don't see a need of them dropping it from 50 to 50, from 55 to 50, when it's 45, and they can just run 45 all the way through until you get up to the school through the Craven County?
And we did, we did get back, I did get back with them, as you suggested, and actually Mark actually suggested that we go, we talked to Preston at the next level, and when I did talk to Preston, he reviewed it. He reviewed Steve Hamilton's request, and he got back with me yesterday and said he agrees with what Steve's recommendation is, and has asked the city to try that for a period of time, and if it doesn't suffice, then we could revisit it at a later date.
So what point next? So you're saying that at this point, they're going to change it from 55 to 50, and we're going to run with that for a while to see how that works? And if that doesn't work, then we come back and compromise a little more?
50, yes, 55 down to 50, and then down to 45. And if that doesn't work, we still see a problem, then we can approach them again.
Okay, so at what point do we need to do? Because I don't agree with that. I live out there, and I, and other residents out there. I am tired of these tractor-trailers, log trucks, dump trucks, heavily loaded, coming by and shaking my home and other residents' homes out there, and I just don't see what 50 miles an hour is going to do. Why can't you just, they bow it to 45? So what do we need to do? Do we need to go back to talk to him again?
At this point, it's, it's the board's direction for us to say we're holding steadfast at 35. That's what the board wants to do. You've already done a resolution to do that, and we can send that back to DOT as our response back to their analysis, if that's the way we want to go.
Well, I agree, take out the 35, since it is a highway, state highway, and go to 45. I can, I can live with 45.
The whole route?
So 45, the entire length, till we get to the school's maintenance facility?
Yes, from the 43, 55 corridor, going down towards Martin Marietta, from that point up to the Craven, I don't know what's the proper name of it, Craven County Schools, and then at that point, they start back with the 55 miles per hour. So that would be 45 running through that whole residential area.
We will, we will contact Preston again, and we will, we will also copy your local board member with the Department of Transportation and let them know that this is what the board's compromise is, and we can go from there.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. While, while we're on the topic of DOT, I received a request from the Greenbrier POA with some concerns about the traffic area for the main entrance on Glen Burney Road. They have a list of four things that they would like to see happen, and I just wanted to give the board the head up. My, my plan is to present those to DOT and let them come back with this evaluation the same way they did here, and let's see how their recommendation marries up with what the request of the Greenbrier community is, and if it works for everybody, great. If it doesn't, and we need to prepare a resolution like we did for the speed limit there, I'd probably be bringing that to you, but it is a pretty big traffic situation when you're at the main entrance of Greenbrier, going down toward the, the new shopping center. There's a lot of traffic down that way, and it's, it's currently 45, I believe, so.
Anything else? Let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Odom.
None tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Mayor, I need to, I don't know if this is the time, or I may need to go back. I completely forgot about, I had an appointment, but I don't have any new business.
Okay, go back to the focus. Do you have an appointment?
Yes, I have an appointment. I'm sitting here sleeping, I guess. I would like for the board to take into consideration and appoint Mr. Martin Best to the Police of the Service Board. I'm quite sure a lot of you know Mr. Martin Best. He was with Craven Community College for over 30-some years, and I think he'd be a great asset to that board.
I second. I was going to do it, I was going to do it on the 24th. She got.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Anything else on our new business? Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes, I received some phone calls today due to the meeting that the permanent residents had. It was, it was a guy from Trent Road who was just speaking about traffic coming through his area. I told him that I wasn't sure, because we haven't given the people from the Housing Authority a chance to speak, to listen to their side of the story as well. And I, I was explaining to him that this is a process that you listen to, and then it's a board decision to make a decision from there. Is it any plans regarding coming off of Trent Road to enter, enter the place? Do they have options that they're going to bring before us to discuss that?
They've discussed some initial things with me, with regards to a site plan, though. I, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure that the main entrance was planned to come off of the Carolina Avenue property, and then obviously that ties into Trent Road. But until we have them here and present, I'm, I'm not sure if they've changed that plan, I'm not aware.
Okay, that's all. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Alderman Harris?
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Harris?
Two things. So to answer Mr. Kenzie's statement, because I've been in about five or six meetings with the Housing Authority, there's been conflict of conversation, but at one point, the Housing Authority, Mr. Marty stated that right now there won't be access through that road, but it's a possibility that in the future there could be. If it's, you know, based on the city, if we decide to open it up or make it into a road, that was the statement that was made. And then the second thing is, April was Minority Health Month, and so there's an individual, her name is Javonte Bass. She is, she lives in Raleigh, but she's back here, she's originally from here, and she's the LPC. And she's doing an event at Stanley White this Saturday, July fourteenth, at eleven to three, and it is basically breaking the stigma between mental health and the black community. It is open to the public, and everyone is welcome. The only thing that we're trying for people to understand is that there's a lot more disparities in the minority communities because, you know, lack of income, lack of health insurance. So this is something free to the public, everyone is welcome, but it's dealing with mental health. So she would love for everybody that can come out. It's going to be Saturday, July fourteenth, eleven a.m. to three p.m. at Stanley White Rec Center. She would love for everyone to come out, because this is a community event. I would love to be there, but I will, I will not be here. But please come out and show your support to this young lady in the community. That's all I got for you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In those meetings, it was, it was, a statement was made tonight, but in those meetings, they asked the members of the, one of the members of the Housing Authority, would you like to listen?
Yes, so one of the meetings that we had with Perbrook, when the Housing Authority met with me and Sabrina, and they asked me to go back to the community and speak to Perbrook and ask them their feelings about, you know, for me to explain what their last proposal was to the community and ask what their thoughts was. And so they wanted me to get a show of hands, and I explained the details to them, and I told them that the individuals were opposed. Marty, obviously, I can't speak for him, maybe didn't understand. So he set up another meeting with Perbrook, and I went there, and so the community members there asked him, you know, if, if Trent Court would move to your neighborhood, would you want the individuals there? And he did say no. And that is God's honest witness, the people were there. Ms. Hazel Royal will speak up, this is a statement that he made, based on that. And then again, that same night, they said they are opposed, and that's why I was telling the board. I was shocked that this came back on, because we already, I did what he asked me to do, and they said no. So I don't know what the holdup is. So we'll be back here on the twenty-fourth, and hopefully we can rectify the situation for good.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Alderman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Best?
I have several items tonight, so I hope everybody will bear with me. You all, I'm having a little patience. First of all, I do want to give a shout out to Foster Hughes and everybody in Parks and Rec for an unbelievable, fabulous Fourth of July. I've heard nothing but rave reviews in our community, Lawson Park, Union Point, how well everything was organized, and really want to thank you for your efforts. I know it takes a lot of staff members and a lot of staff time to do this, but thank you very much. Our citizens were most appreciative. The second thing, Mayor, I'd like to speak to is, back in January, we, we gave direction to freeze properties, city properties for sale, and we did speak to that and talk to that. And, you know, we asked for a timeframe of around six months, and so we're about at the six months right now. And so I thought it would be appropriate maybe tonight to speak to that. And what I would ask to do is talk to this board to give direction to Mr. Stevens that we continue to freeze properties that would be potentially in the CNI area, or what would be for the Redevelopment Commission, but open up the rest of the properties of the City of New Bern, because there are people who have been requesting from Mr. Stevens, and I think some of us, to purchase properties outside of that area. So I would like to open that discussion right now amongst the board members to see how they feel. Second, you know, if we do open up these properties, I think we also need to either have a work session or come back and discuss maybe changing the rules a little bit, where there's twenty-five percent of tax value or whatever, and have maybe a better method of what we would ask for that property to be more appropriate. So I'm, I, if you don't mind, Mayor, just like to open that up for discussion to see how any, any of the other members feel.
I think part of that formula, we, we are hoping that with a redevelopment commission that you will not take any less than fair market value, because the redevelopment commission, along with a lot of other things in its model, is going to promote real estate and home construction, and all those things that bring property values up. So that in itself should, it should take care of itself, because the redevelopment commission will be able to do things the City of New Bern is not allowed to do by general statute. Say, others?
Mayor, the only thing I would have to say is I would agree, you know, if we're going to open them back up, maybe we need to discuss about, you know, what the previous policy is, and make sure that, you know, it's just the ones that's within the CNI, because I've had a few individuals, mainly churches, that have come to me that would like to purchase the lots to make more parking for their facilities. And, you know, they're not in the CNI, and I feel like, you know, if we can't gift them to them because they're a nonprofit, or, you know, allow them to purchase it, I wouldn't want the stipulation of what we currently have hinder us from saying or voting yes to that. But that would be my only concern, that that's not going to be impacted by any changes in our, our board, what we need to do to rectify it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My question is, a lot of the parcels are very small in some areas, and we spend a lot of time cutting grass on a small portion of, parcel of land. And what are we going to do with those small parcels? I mean, that's my question there, is to try to not hold on to something that is not going to be profitable to the city.
Are they bigger for the house owner?
No, they're not, some of them is not. I don't know how many pieces are like that, but from my understanding, there's a great deal of that from conversation.
Right, right. Could be that they're FEMA lots, and if that's the case, Mr. Stevens, then we would be able to sell those anyway, is that correct?
No, and I, if I, if, if I heard you correctly, I think the, the main point of emphasis of what you're looking at tonight is to open up the properties that are outside of the CNI property area for us to be able to entertain offers to purchase on. And the question you're asking is, is for those properties that are outside of the CNI area, what are you looking at as far as a minimum bid for us to entertain and offer to purchase? Formally, it was twenty-five percent was where we were. So if it's a thousand dollars, you had to put a minimum bid of two hundred and fifty dollars. So that's completely up to the board on how we want to do it. If you want to do a work session, I'm happy to help out. If you want to make that decision, the nine on the properties that are outside of the CNI area, the way, the way I'm hearing is, is for those within the CNI area, you're wanting to kind of leave those frozen until the Redevelopment Commission can determine what they want to do. As far as the maintenance, Mr. Kenzie, those lots that are FEMA lots, obviously the city has to hold those, and will continue to hold those beyond, unless, of course, there are certain criteria that is met within the deed restrictions that FEMA put on it. And I think some of those can be stormwater facilities, it could be, you know, things that are of a pervious nature typically, no structures typically unless, I think there was one case on one property that I looked at where they allowed open all, on all sides, kind of like a picnic shelter kind of property. But other than that, they're very restrictive, and, and, and being able to transfer those to someone else would require their approval.
Alderman Best, you have a comment?
Yes, I, I have concerns, because I know you're saying that we're going to limit it tonight of only the properties that's within, within the CNI plant. But I know, no, I know, I know, but I'm talking in reference to a property that Pastor Hazel Royal had contacted the city in reference to. And I know that her church, and I know it's, it's in the redevelopment area, and I know that her church will redevelop this property. So I didn't know, at what point are you with that? I know it had, had some issues with it, so.
That, we, we, we've come to find that that is a FEMA lot. It is restricted, and if I recall correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, city clerk, but you, you reached out to Ms. Royal, and they did have intent to put some kind of facility on that property. And if that is the case, then we would not be able to transfer that property, and FEMA would not consider it. So, and my understanding was, the comment was made, if we can't put a facility on it, then we're not interested in them just having raw land. Is that correct?
They wanted it to, to build storage structure.
So if that is the case, then we would not be able to transfer that property, because it is restrictive, and that's the specific property that I was talking about. You could put a, a shelter on it or something like that. Even if, even if FEMA would consider us being able to transfer the property to another owner, it would be restricted.
I just want to make sure that someone got that to Ms. Royal, Pastor Royal.
We've spoken with her, yes.
Thank you.
Mark, on some of these properties that are beside, example, the one that's on High Street, there's a FEMA lot there, and there's a house on either side of it. Is there any way that we can, knowing that they can't do anything with it, but at least the homeowner on either side, if they took this property and maintained it?
What we have done in the past, and I'll give you, for instance, there's a, down on North Hills Drive, there was a gentleman who approached the city on a lot that was a buyout, that became, it was a FEMA buyout lot. He approached the city about using that lot to expand his yard. We could not transfer the property to him, but we did do a long-term agreement with him so that he could utilize it basically as his own yard if he wanted to. He couldn't put physical structures on it, he couldn't do any of that kind of stuff. But let's say he wanted to plant a garden, something like that. He leased it for, I think, a dollar per year or something like that for a, an extended period of time.
Well, at least they maintain it that way, too.
It was a ten-year agreement, is what we did with it.
We ought to reach out to some of these property owners to see if, I'm just trying to get mad out of having to move the house.
Anything that can reduce our workload of our staff to have to maintain these lots, these individual lots, would be tremendous.
Yeah, I mean, is there any way we can reach out to some of these property owners that's on either side of some of these FEMA lots and see if they would like that same type of agreement?
Sure, I mean, we, we could do that, Matt.
Still a new business.
I guess, yeah, we are. So, I mean, is the direction then to the city manager, and that's what this group needs to decide, is to go ahead and free up the other properties?
Well, the first thing is, when are we going to get this redevelopment set up? What's timeline?
Next meeting, right?
Well, that, or the first meeting in August. I'm still, I have one more Alderman to have a meeting with, and as soon as Mr. Kenzie can get his schedule together, the mayor and I are going to meet, and we can talk about that. And then we'll go to the next, next episode, either the last meeting in July or the first meeting in August.
Ms. Bangle, also, when is the deadline you want names to be submitted to you before?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
I just think as soon as it, because then the process of trying to get BIOS and all that other stuff, you know, it's going to take, and we need, what, ten days? City clerk, you need that information prior to a meeting, ten days prior? To be put on an agenda?
Do you want to make a motion pertaining to this, as far as the boundaries?
Well, I don't really want to make a motion, I would rather give direction, and then they can, I don't know if we have to come back with a, a resolution, or what, what you suggest we need to do.
But my, my suggestion would be to give staff some direction as to what offers, what's the minimum offer to accept. The twenty-nine percent was put in place because people will come in and offer us ten dollars. And then we put it on the agenda, it comes to you, so we're, we're trying to make this more efficient. So if we need a work session or put it on the agenda to, to talk through, what kind of minimums?
I don't think we need a work session, fifty or seventy-five percent, if you, or, or market value, I mean, because these lots, I mean, we, tax value, we want to at least get the money, because is the, is the lots being sold going to funnel into the redevelopment?
Yeah, my, well, my question, too, is on a lot where something's been torn down. We have the fees that have been put on there, and in some cases, the tax value of the property is less than.
In all cases.
In all cases, than what it costs us to tear it down, so we never recoup our money, at least.
And you never will.
Well, I mean, could, but that, can that be a stipulation? That you have to pay, you know, fifty or seventy-five percent of tax value plus if there's any teardown fees?
Well, people, people won't buy it.
They won't buy it?
Right, and, and that's, that, that's the catch twenty-two. It's fun to talk about getting fair market value, then we'll count our money. The problem is, when you put it at tax value, we won't get any offers. That's been our experience.
So then how, what would, if we opened up the sale of the property outside of the Redevelopment Commission boundaries, and asked for fifty percent of the tax value?
Sure.
Is that what we're looking for, for direction?
Exactly, that's the direction staff needs, yes, sir.
So do I need to make that as a motion?
That'd be great.
Salute, then.
Second.
Motion, second, is there a discussion?
Are you okay with that?
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're trying to tell me that there's a piece of property, and it's a tax value on it's forty-five hundred dollars, then we are going to only receive fifty percent of that forty-five hundred dollars?
That's the minimum bid.
That's the bid, right. So that's, and most of the time, that's the way they run, they, they purchased them for that, for that amount, so.
I think, I think the attorney can correct me, but I think there's two stopgaps. If somebody makes an offer that meets the minimum, we can decide at that point whether or not we even want to accept the offer. If we decide we want to accept the offer, and it comes back and there's no other bids, then we don't even have to accept that offer, we can decline it. So if somebody makes an opening bid, like you said, twenty-two fifty, then we say, yeah, let's see what happens. If we don't get any more bids, then we decide we don't want to sell for twenty-two fifty, we can say no at that point, right? But we just pay the cost of the advertising.
Yes, sir, that, if, if there's two checks and balances, the first, do you want to proceed with entertaining offers? So this first step is not to accept it, it's to entertain other bids. And you can decide to do that or not. And then you pay the advertising fee, and then the highest bid comes in, and then at that point, you still have a chance to say, you know what, we're not happy, we're not going to sell it. So you get two looks at it before you move, and that's kind of where the fair market value concept goes. When it's advertised and talked about, and the highest number comes in, that's kind of reflective of.
And there, there's an upset period as well?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, ten days. And, and, and every new bid resets it for ten more days. So, again, we can start there. It's just, it's just a way for staff to not waste your time with a number that, that is absolutely a non-starter. But it doesn't mean that by getting the offer that you have to do anything. It just, it comes to you.
And one thing, and I'm not trying to, to say fifty percent is where we should go, but Ms. Ruggieri just kind of reminded me, and, and we, twenty-five is not a number, we just pull it out of the air. The, the average sales price of the properties that we were dealing with were averaging somewhere around twenty-three point seven, or twenty-three percent, or something like that, of what the value of the tax was on those particular properties. So we came up with twenty-five as a minimum starting bid, to give us a number to say, you know what, we're not going to entertain anything other than offers that are twenty-five percent of that tax value or greater. And there's been cases where we actually got offers that were greater than the twenty-five percent, even though that was the minimum bid. But most of them, in, in our particular instance, when you say that property was worth forty-five hundred dollars, the, the issue is, is it was a thousand dollar lot with a thirty-seven hundred dollar, or thirty-five hundred dollar lien on it, based on the demolition. The twenty-seven hundred dollars, uh, twenty-seven hundred fifty dollars of, of an offer probably, as a fifty percent rule, wouldn't even be entertained by the person buying it, because the, the physical property itself is probably only worth a thousand. That's what we're trying to get at. And that's where the twenty-three point something, we actually did some analysis on that. But if fifty percent is the board's direction, we'll, we'll definitely do that.
I'm not understanding what you're just saying.
Excuse me?
I almost said, I agree with the fifty percent.
I, I'm not understanding what you just said, because you're telling me that the tax value is probably a thousand dollars?
I'm telling you that the land tax value would be a thousand dollars. The problem is, is we put a demolition lien that becomes also part of the tax value, if you want to call it that. I mean, it's not necessarily the tax value, but it's a lien. And, and, and it becomes part of what is owed on the property if someone were to buy it.
Just let me, again, not, in the spirit of being helpful, I don't want to confuse two separate issues. Tax value is the value set by the Craven County Tax Office, as what they believe the fair market value is, period. And they may be right, they may be wrong, but the market sorts that out. What tax is owed that resulted from the foreclosure could be ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, depending on the demolition, but that's money that's gone and we're never going to see again.
So, Attorney Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
So North Carolina General Statute don't give you the right to, to say that taxes on that property was two thousand dollars? And, North Carolina General Statute don't give you that right to collect that two thou- to be able to ask a offer for that two thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am, but that's how we got the property. When, when the people didn't pay their taxes or the lien, we stepped in and foreclosed, along with the county typically, and acquired ownership of that property. Now it belongs to the city and the county, and we can dispose of it any way we want.
Okay, all right. So, so, once it becomes a municipality, then that way you can govern it in any way you see how, okay?
Exactly, and your burden is to, you know, do the best for taxpayers that you can. And, and it's been our experience that the, the market doesn't get terribly excited about these small lots in a blighted area.
Alderman Odom, Ms. Ruggieri, on, on that calculation, I remember that twenty-three, twenty-four percent value. In your estimation, that sales history that we had, about what percentage of that were properties located inside the CNI zone? It was a lot, right?
Yeah, oh, in the ninety, high nineties.
So ninety percent of what we sold was in a distressed area, so therefore the, the value, obviously, we were selling for is lower. So that's the reason I don't really have a problem with fifty percent.
Yeah, that twenty-three percent wasn't an average sale, it was the average of when there was competing bids. The overall average was lower than, was, was lower than twenty percent. But when there, when the market was acting, and there was two players or more bidding on a property, that, that value averaged out to about twenty-three point something percent, so we choose twenty-five percent.
I have just one question that, so when we, the city, sell the property and save that twenty-five percent, whatever we get, we have to give a portion of that to the county?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to do fifty or seventy-five percent, because, I mean, we want to recoup a lot of what we've paid out, because I feel like we're doing the, the work.
Well, it depends. If there's a demolition, then we've, we've, the city has invested a lot of money in that demolition. In terms of the legal fees, that the county has taken a responsibility for the tax foreclosure. So they're doing that work, they get those costs reimbursed off the top. But again, it's, it's, it's easy to get confused, because we think of these properties like real estate across. like real estate across the city.
Right.
And you would never sell your house for less than the tax value.
That's correct.
Because those properties tend to be pretty accurate as tax value. But in the blighted areas, what we find is that the tax value is actually higher than what the market believes it is. As Evans by transactions between willing buyers and willing sellers.
Correct.
So when we, I'm sorry, when we sell a piece of property, the funds go back into just the general fund?
Yes, sir.
So how would the board feel about if we sell this properties, that the money goes towards the Redevelopment Commission to be?
Well, what would happen is the properties that would be in the redevelopment?
I'm talking about even the ones outside the Redevelopment Commission. We sell a piece of property.
Certainly be a pleasure this forward.
I wouldn't agree to that. I say the properties that are sold within the CNI, yes, but outside of that, it should go to general fund. I mean, because we can use those funds to do other things.
They're being maintained by the general fund.
Right.
Okay.
Attorney Davis, another question, rational statement. Is there any way that you can talk to the Craven County Tax Advisor, Mr. Ronnie Antri, and see if there's any way that a piece of property that's foreclosed and is in the city limits, it's now the city and the county? The cities are the ones that's going to actually be maintaining that property? If they would relieve the taxes?
Well, it becomes more of a political question than a legal question. Legally, staff or even the board can't forgive taxes. But what you can do, when either party owns it together, either party can give up their interest.
Oh, that's what I meant, not forgive.
And so that's a question to the Board of Commissioners. You know, if you have a vision that you want to carry forward, is there a way that they could see clear to give up their interest? And I will tell you, from my experience, when we have a project or a vision in mind, they've always been very great about giving the city their interest, provided, like a Habitat House, provided that the city is putting that property in a place that will improve the community. So that's just a question that can be presented to their board.
They did that for Days Inn property, correct?
They did, they do it, again, I don't want to jinx this, but they've been very consistent, when we have a vision, they've always said yes.
Thank you.
New business.
We got the direction we didn't need, we're good to go, you're good to go on the direction.
You got a motion in a second.
I know, but we've got it. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
So I just want to make sure then, have we unfrozen the property outside of the CNI?
Yes, ma'am.
And fifty percent bid.
With a fifty percent bid.
Question.
I just want to make sure.
Why can't we offer, why can't we ask for more? Why you have to go with fifty percent?
Well, that's a, we can ask for more, that's a minimum, that's a minimum. So if the offer comes before us and we're not satisfied that it's high enough, we can reject it.
So why start with fifty percent? We can start with seventy-five, ask them for seventy-five.
Let's go, go higher.
I mean, if they want, yeah, if they want the property.
I think you're going to have a hard time getting fifty, yeah, I think the...
Well, no, we can't make that judgment call, we don't know.
Well, I think, I think it's already been determined on the history of some of the other sales.
People that want property, so.
Well, let them come with the best offer, we can decide to accept it or not.
That was a problem before, we was just giving away property, and I think that we should up our standards.
Do you have some more new business?
I'll just briefly, because everybody looks like they're looking at the clock, they're ready to run out of here. So I would like to update this board, because I'm sure you're getting phone calls about parking in downtown New Bern. Hooray, topic of the day. Yeah, I know, we, after four o'clock, no enforcement. So to let you know that enforcement has started. It's eight a.m. to four p.m. Monday through Friday. On-street parking is free. The three lots are at the end of Craven Street, Farmer's Market and New Street, they are free. So between the on-street parking, four hundred spaces and three lots, almost two hundred spaces, we have almost six hundred spaces that are there for the public to use. Lots of misinformation on Facebook and other places. And I just want to say that we're here to work with you. This is a trial, we're trying to do something here in our community. It's been really frustrating, and I thought it was more important to try to do something than to do nothing. People, the concerns we're hearing is some of the shop owners now, which we had many meetings, and they had an opportunity to voice their concerns and either didn't or whatever, are asking now for three hours, that two hours isn't enough. I want the public to know, we're taking all of these comments into consideration. We'd like to go maybe for about six weeks, six, eight weeks, and just see how this works, and then come back and try to make some tweaks to it. We're already making some tweaks, we're going to come back on the twenty-fourth with some tweaks to the ordinance. We're having an issue with some of the residents who live downtown, we need to tweak that a little bit. But I think the thing I want everybody to notice is, the comment has been, there's no cars downtown. Well, guess where all the cars are? They're in the parking lot at the end of Craven Street. It was almost full today, about fifteen-plus cars at Farmer's Market, about eight cars over at New Street. These lots set empty every day. And now they got cars in, because those are all the employees that were parking in downtown New Bern on the street. And that's why the streets are empty. And so now we have spaces for people to come and shop, we have businesses complaining they're not getting any business. I've talked to some shopkeepers that said, you know, everything's good, you know, people are still coming in. So I would ask our shopkeepers, I would ask the citizens of New Bern, if you love this community, as much as I see you love it on Facebook and everywhere else, then support your businesses downtown. We have free parking, it's there, come and shop in downtown. You can shop in two hours, if you feel like you need three hours, then park in one of our very convenient parking lots. But please help support us. We're doing this because we wanted to make sure as shop owners and shopkeepers in downtown that we had parking for our customers, and that our employees parked elsewhere. That's all we were trying to do. So please be supportive and help us. Board of Aldermen, if I can answer any questions, you may be getting calls of concern, please ask me, funnel them to me, have your citizens call me and talk to me. Happy to do that. Many of us, Swiss Bear, I want to thank them and their parking committee, they put a lot of time and effort into this. And again, we're still working some of the kinks out, so. Does anybody have any questions on this board, maybe that they were asked that I could answer?
I received the email from Joe Allen.
Mr. Allen, yes, and I've already responded to it, and I've set up a meeting. You've all received an email from Mr. Allen. I've set up a meeting with him for next week to discuss some of what he's got in his, some of his issues. So he makes very valid statements in there. And I guess, that's my song, song.
That it?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. On favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.